...Church and Reverend Lilly will give the invocation. Could we keep the door closed, please, Ms. Cho, while the invocation is being given? Thank you. Reverend Lilly.
They don't usually close the door at our church. That's pretty good.[15.74][15.74](Laughter). So, given the invocation, a town meeting is kind of, I see, as a spiritual equivalent of the reading of the rules of the academy. So, but I see, as folks are coming forward, the zealots of the town sharpening their knives, I know why I'm here. So, we, I think, respecting all traditions and as many as we can, let's hope that we can put something in for all the higher callings that we have and the higher spirit that we may have that binds us together in caring for this town. So, let us join in the spirit of prayer. We are grateful for this community and for people who serve this place professionally, those who come to this town meeting with their hearts. We ask that respect, a certain degree of kindness and understanding may be present, that we have a certain amount of trust for people, that their motives are good, that their intentions are here, that are of their heart. We ask that we may all serve the right and the good as we seek for the best in our community with respect for each other and for the goodness that has been ours. Amen. Play ball.[84.43][84.43](Laughter).
We don't do it that way in the Methodist Church, Russ, but (Laughter), that's pretty close. Well, let's see. Who was here to, at a town meeting for the first time? Who has never been to an Acton town? Don Gilberti.[105.04][105.04](Laughter). I know that's not true, Don. This is just the first one you paid attention at.[111.53][111.53](Laughter). You remember when he was caught watching some ballgame some years ago? Yeah? Chasing Dooley. He knew what the score was, but he didn't know what article we were on.[122.47][122.47](Laughter). Problem was, neither did I. Who else is here for the first time? I won't make fun of all of you like I, as I did my friend, Don. Well, good. Most of you have been here before. I hope you enjoy yourself and I hope you'll be back. We'll try not to make it too confusing. If we do, come on up and see me and I'll try to unconfuse you if I possibly can. I'll start off by asking the chairman of the board of selectmen, Dorey Hunter, to introduce the people at this table so you will know who they are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On my far left is Nancy Tavernier. Beside her is Bill Mullin, and I want everybody to recognize that this is Bill Mullin's last town meeting as a selectman. After six years of absolutely exemplary service as a selectman, Bill has decided to retire and we really are greatly saddened to be bereft of his great talents, but wish him well in whatever his next extracurricular activity might be. Besides (Applause), to my immediate left is Wayne Fredericks, Herman Kabakov, Don Johnson, the town manager, Mike Callahan, town council, Kathy Belvin, the town clerk. Behind me, wave your hand, is John Murray, the assistant town manager and financial wizard, and Tess Summers, who is our accounting wizard.
And now for some financial wizardry. Tom Mackey, the chairman of the finance committee. Tom?
Thank you, Don. On your right is John Penderville. Coming across is Sid Johnson, Chuck Homestead, our vice chair, Gene Seiflett, Bob Miller. This is a test, I hope you realize. They go through this every time. Don makes me do it. Reda Roba and two people who probably have the record now for the least number of hours on the FinCom.[258.14][258.14](Laughter) But they are not getting out of anything. Jesse Liberty and Peter Ashton. Thank you.[266.22][266.22](Applause).
Thank you, Tom. Normally, at about this time, we spend a few minutes going over the rules of order, but I will dispense with that largely tonight because most of them are in your warrant on pages seventy-four, seventy-five, and seventy-six. And I know that you've studied this dutifully before you've come here tonight, and so you know all of these things plus more. It was a little bit disconcerting to me tonight, I must tell you, when Jesse Liberty came up to me and said, "Here, here's a book of Robert's Rules of Order. Maybe you can use this."[310.45][310.45](Laughter) And, you know, that's kind of a smart alecky thing for giving to me for a guy who's been doing this job twenty-three years, but he's probably right. So, Jesse, I'm going to give this the time and effort. It's six-hundred-and-ninety pages, seven-hundred-and-six pages deserves. I'm going to read this in between articles two and three.[332.03][332.03](Laughter). Someone's lights are on. Thank you. The license plate number reads R with a T underneath, ten, TE. Whoever that is, your lights are on. And perhaps you'll turn them off, or you, they'll turn off by themselves in a couple of hours. Now, I would, it's a delay switch, some new feature. Now, somebody tonight, you'll recognize that I'm speaking from a different location tonight. And it's amazing how things work out because somebody, to help me out, gave me these tonight.[375.56][375.56](Laughter) But, but I won't be needing them, and he said, "Here, use them anyway." They look like they should come with a dog, but thank you, whoever did give me those. It would have been a good idea because we're using a new high-intensity light tonight, so it should be brighter for you and you should be able to see the screen a little bit better. After article two, I believe it is, there will be a short presentation by the League of Women Voters when I call for other reports, who will review some of the changes that they recommended to town meeting in their study this year, most of which have been implemented or will be implemented. And I would like to thank the League now for doing that. It was extremely helpful. I think with that, we're about ready to begin. I expect that this town meeting will, I'd like to look at this as a forty-dollar town meeting. It will probably only last two nights and probably will not, we'll not get into the school budget tonight, but we will come pretty close to getting to it, I believe. It is unlikely that the school will come up as a subject for debate this evening. We will begin, as we normally do, with the consent calendar. And just to refresh your memory, the consent calendar consists of articles that the Board of Selectmen thinks is relatively non-controversial and that we pass them all at one time with a single vote, and that vote is usually unanimous. I normally read the article that's on the consent calendar. If two people say "hold" approximately at the same time, we will take that off the consent calendar and deal with it in its normal order. If none are held, we'll vote on all thirteen. We'll see how we go. So, I will start off with the consent calendar. The motion is, Mr. Hunter moves that the town take up the thirteen articles as listed in the consent calendar on pages twenty-two and twenty-three of the warrant. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now, we will go through the consent calendar, and if you want to take any articles off it, please, please yell out "hold." Article twelve, the Council on Aging Van Enterprise Budget. Article thirteen, the Nursing Enterprise Fund. Article fourteen, Septage Disposal Enterprise Budget. Article sixteen, Section Fifty-three and a Half Self-Funding Programs. Article seventeen, Street Acceptances. Article eighteen, Central Street Sidewalk Easements. Article nineteen, John Swift Road Easement, Isaac Davis Trail. Article twenty, Road Layout and Acceptance, Piper Road and Charter Road. Article twenty-one, Plowing of Private Ways. Article thirty, Chapter Ninety Highway Reimbursement Program. Article thirty-one, Emergency Disaster Aid Appropriations. Article thirty-five, Merriam School Offset Receipts Budget. And finally, Article thirty-nine, Corrections, Clarifications, and Minor Modifications in the Zoning Bylaw. None of them were held. Is everybody still awake out there? This is, this is good. This is a first. We've never done this before. No articles on the consent calendar have been held. I will now take a vote on the consent calendar. All in favor of passing these articles by consent, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Article one, Choosing Town Officers. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven motions under article one. There are normally six or seven motions under article one. Of course, the first one is the most important.[631.79][631.79](Laughter). Mr. Hunter moves that the town fix the compensation for elected officers as shown in the warrant. Do I hear a second? Mr. Hunter, you wish to comment to your motion? He does not. Anybody wish to comment to the motion? Seeing nobody standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. The second motion, Malcolm S. McGregor nominates Frederick A. Harris as a trustee of the West Acton Fireman's Relief Fund, term to expire in two thousand and one. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close nominations and we will vote. All in favor of electing Frederick A. Harris as trustee of the West Acton Fireman's Relief Fund, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. The motion carries unanimously. William Clawer nominates Joseph A. Conquest as a trustee of the Fireman's Relief Fund, term to expire in two thousand and one. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close nominations. All in favor of Joseph A. Conquest being elected as a trustee of the Fireman's Relief Fund, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Francis Moretti nominates Shirley U. Toll as a trustee of the Charlotte Goodno Fund, term to expire in the year two thousand and one. Are there any other nominations? Seeing nobody standing, I'll close nominations. All in favor of Shirley Toll as trustee of the Charlotte Goodno Fund, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. The motion's carried unanimously. John Powers nominates Cornelia O. Huber as a trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund, term to expire in the year two thousand and one. Are there any other nominations? Nominations are closed. All in favor of electing Cornelia Huber as a trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carries unanimously. Cornelia O. Huber nominates Frances M. Joyner, Jr. as a trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund to fill the unexpired term of Edwin Miller, term to expire in the year two thousand. Are there any other nominations? Seeing nobody standing, we'll close nominations. All in favor of Frances M. Joyner as a trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries unanimously. You know, I've been doing this now for twenty-three years, and I'm not sure I know what the Goodno Fund are and the Elizabeth White Fund, but I don't think I'm alone in this group. I do know what they are. Robert L. Loomis nominates Virginia Rude as a trustee of the Citizens Library Association of West Acton, term to expire in the year two thousand and one. Are there any other nominations? Seeing nobody standing, we'll close nominations. All in favor of electing Virginia Rude as a trustee of the Citizens Library Association of West Acton, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. The motion's carried unanimously. For those of you who are here for the first time, this is not exactly the fever pitch of town meeting. This is, this is not the highlight. What do they say? This is the perigee of town meeting. We're going to hear and accept reports now under article two. Mr. Hunter moves that the town accept the reports of the various town officers and boards as set forth in the nineteen ninety-seven town report and that the moderator calls for any other reports. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment, Mr. Hunter?
None.
No comment from Mr. Hunter? Any comment from the town meeting members? Seeing nobody standing, we will vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. The motion's carried unanimously. Are there other reports to be given at this time? I know there are. People have told me as such. Yes, the back.
Now, is it, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Joanne Berry, president of the Acton Area League of Women Voters, and I wouldn't call this a presentation. It's really a thank you. The League of the Acton Area wishes to thank you, Mr. Moderator, and the Board of Selectmen for your very positive response to our town meeting position. The League conducted an extensive study of town meeting procedures last fall and summer and adopted the position in the fall. It takes the form of recommendations or suggestions, and it was printed in the Beacon last week, for any of you who might have seen it. Most, our interest and intent is to promote the efficiency and fairness of the democratic process. Most of what we recommended is already done by this town meeting. We appreciate the adoption of the seven PM start time, the provision for a resource person to answer individual questions, and the display of the articles on the front screen. We are also pleased that you have made provisions for a deputy moderator to be elected in case of your absence and the, for your explanation of town meeting procedures published in the warrant, as you had previously mentioned. We found them to be helpful and useful for town meeting members. Further, we urge, that was all on the plus side, and we do urge that all the appropriate boards provide their recommendations to the warrant, and we understand that sometimes that is a time problem and appreciate the extra step that the FinCom took to publish their recommendations in the Beacon to let people know their positions. And to all town meeting members, we urge you to listen, to speak your mind concisely, and to vote the way you see it. Please feel free to ask League members any questions you have about our position. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Are there any other reports to be given? I should say, as Joanne Berry did introduce herself, if anyone speaking at a town meeting for the first time at least would give their name and street, it would be very helpful. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Celeste Margolis, and I live at twenty-four Lincoln Drive. I am here representing a group called CARE, Citizens of Acton-Boxborough Rallying for Education. We are a group of Acton and Boxborough citizens who are concerned about the significant issues confronting our school systems. We mobilized after Acton's recent override failure, and our members represent a broad cross-section of our community. We believe that our efforts are essential to a solution as Acton and Boxborough address growing student populations, aging school buildings, and increasing taxes. We realize we have both local Acton public and Acton-Boxborough regional school issues before us. We support the decision not to bring the proposed elementary school building project to this annual town meeting. However, we plan to serve as a resource to the school committees as they develop a more comprehensive space and building plan for the elementary schools and region. Our hope and our expectation is that a plan will be brought to the community for approval this fall of nineteen ninety-eight. It is imperative that this plan have a sound educational philosophy at its base. Stating this philosophy must be an integral part of the plan's presentation to the community. We ask that the school committees work quickly and concisely so CARE can have ample time to understand and communicate a plan that we support. We are encouraged by some of the new ideas now being discussed as they begin to address some of the regional needs. This statement is respectfully submitted by over a hundred individuals who are members of CARE. We encourage anyone who is interested in this vital topic to participate in this process. We invite all citizens of Acton and Boxborough to join CARE in its work to support our public education for the long term. Thank you.
Are there any other reports to be given at this time? If not, we will move to article three, but prior to article three, there will be a series of presentations from Tom Mackey regarding Acton's overall finances, since this precedes the first issue dealing with finances. That will be followed up by remarks from the chairman of the board of selectmen, Dorey Hunter, and then I believe it will be concluded by remarks from finance committee member John Penderville. Is that correct? Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. In keeping with the directions from the moderator, I'm Tom Mackey, and I live at Nagal Woods. Tonight, I would like to fulfill one of the missions, the goals of the FinCom, and that's to try to, as clear as we can, present the state of the health, I might add, the robust health of the town of Acton. And in keeping with that, I ask you for the next fifteen, at most twenty, minutes, to think of Acton as a total community. A community where people live before they're born, when they're born, as they go to school, as they work, on up until elderly that have more white hair than I do. So many times at a town meeting, we get lost in the splinter groups, or the articles that it's called, and I'd like you to think about Acton as a total community. Next chart. Now, one of the things that we have an annual town meeting for is to budget and agree upon next year's financial budget. In other words, we're now talking about nineteen ninety-nine. Now, in keeping with the FinCom goals and objectives, we have a very simple, overly simple sometime, set of three questions to ask, no matter how good an idea or how good an object is. And the object tonight is to try to come up with a budget to keep the town in operating. We ask, what does it cost? Where's the money coming from? And how do you plan to expend the money? Now, you see a number up there that's approximately a little bit more than forty million dollars. That is what's going to take to keep Acton going through the next fiscal year. We are going to see where the money's coming from, an overview, where it's being expended, how it fits in with a five-year plan, and how it affects your pocketbook. Now, when you look at the forty point three, you know, that seems like a lot of money, but somewhere along the line, you have to put that in perspective. Next chart. There are three years you want to be thinking about, please. Fiscal year ninety-seven, which is the last year we have complete empirical data. Fiscal year ninety-eight, which we're in right now, in fact, I think we just started the fourth quarter, and fiscal year ninety-nine, which we are now trying to agree upon how we are going to finance that year. Now, if you look at the chart, you'll see there are two points on this particular chart. And I'm comparing it now, ninety-nine, what we're going to talk about tonight, against ninety-seven, which was the last year with real data. And the important thing here, two points. One, our revenues are growing at less than our expenses. And two, we're using free cash to meet the deficit. Now, let's go back to the revenues and the expenses. Now, there are proactive initiatives being taken right now to try to build the Acton tax base. Your Board of Selectmen have gone out, and they've got an economic development committee. Your master plan is being upgraded. You've just got through electing a young man, well, maybe he's not so young, who believes there should be some more coming from the state. The other way you could do is have an override. We don't want to have a general override. We worked very hard to avoid that, and you'll notice this year, because of free cash, we're not going to have an override, a general override. Next, we could reduce expenses. I have sat, I've argued, I've been beaten up, I've done my beating up, about cutting expenses. And your elected officials vow that this budget they turned in is bare bones. There are some of you out there who feel there isn't enough money in it to take care of some elementary stuff. So, cutting expenses is just about not one of our alternatives. How have we been making up the difference between the revenues and the expenses for the last, at least, three years? We've been using a term that drives me right out of my mind. It's a term that I cannot fathom. I hate to use it. Free cash is, was never free where I came from, but it is a budget. Next slide. It is a budget term that is used by the Department of Revenue, and it gives us, your elected and your appointed officials, an opportunity for some flexibility. Now, the chart that you have there tries to describe where this nebulous thing called free cash, and we've heard many people use it over the years. It goes to the last empirical year, the last year that was completed, in ninety-seven, and you can read as well as I can, so I'm not going to read the chart to you, but it's a consequence of money, of funds left over from ninety-seven. Now, the question is, is that what, how could this be used? Your mass association of Acton finance committees recommend that this free cash not be used for operational, not be used for anything other than emergencies and unforeseen expenditures. Next, next chart. In October, we received word from the Department of Revenue that our free cash position back to July first for this year would be one point nine million. We have proposed that eight-hundred-and-seven million of that be used for, one, article twenty-three, tonight, and also to balance the rest of the budget. Now, that leaves us one point one million in this term, this, what I prefer to call budgetary fund. Now, the question is, what is this, where does this put us in? Why didn't we use all one point one and put it in something else? Next slide. It is not a guaranteed number. This fund varies, and as you can see on the chart that just went up, you look at the last three years, you have certified amount, you have the amount that's been used on down to the bottom of the percentage of the expenditures. Now, one thing on this chart I would like you to get out of, as you go from left to right, each one of the rows is decreasing. What that brings to you is the availability of free cash is decreasing in the future. This is not a given from year to year. We won't know until October how much the free cash is for next year. Okay? Now, with that in mind, we've been using free cash to meet the budget deficit or the revenues to offset the expenditures. And we'll continue to do that. We're not going to ask you to have a general override if you have a million dollars sitting in free cash. Now, before we go on to the next article, we go back to the three questions. How much does something cost? Forty million. Where's the money coming from and how is it expended? This chart addresses where the money is coming from. If you look at the bottom, you see eighty percent of property. Anybody who's been paying property in this town knows that's, that's it. I bring your attention to two items up there, three, we've just been talking about free cash. There are only state aid, which is identified at seven percent. There's no reason why Acton isn't getting more from the state. That is not welfare money. The state is dependent upon the money we, as citizens, put into it. I bring your attention to the fees, a three-and-a-half million dollars. In there is your excise taxes that you pay for the cars. There's approximately two million this year, five percent of our budget. Keep in mind, this is a political year, and there are already two people running for governor who say they want to reduce state taxes, one of which ways reduce and eliminate excise tax. The excise tax that we pay goes right to our town. So, I'd be very careful of that. Here's where the money is coming from. The next chart is where is the money going? Okay, this is the one we all know. I mean, this is the one where, why we've come tonight, why we're interested in certain articles. Four expense centers, core centers, if you will. At five o'clock on that, on the chart up there, the municipal takes approximately a third. Now, the municipal side of the house, I'd like to mention two things. We've had the most serious problem with Neswick. We've heard about that year after year. It hasn't gone away, but it has been minimized, and it's an example of people, your staff, your town staff, not only working hard, but working smart. They have used initiative to keep that expense to us down. Secondly, on the municipal side, you might be very happy to know, the way they put their budget together and the way they share it with the FinCom is a very systematic way. On the second Saturday in January, the Board of Selectmen, this was introduced two years ago. On the second Saturday in January, the Board of Selectmen, this was introduced two years ago, and it's been going on now for the third year, sit down and have the department heads and Don Johnsons present to the Board of Selectmen their individual budgets. The Board of Selectmen invite the FinCom, and we develop a sense of where the needs are for the town. The important point is a systemic approach to it. Now, as we move around to the next core centers, the local schools, we've just gone through, the override was beaten. The problem with space hasn't gone away. If you've got to do is walk through schools. Special ed is still a tremendous expense. Again, there's a chance for state aid. You know, many people are telling us how we are supposed to do something, but not sending money to do it, enough money. And we get to the infrastructure of the schools, and you will hear us nagging about that more and more tonight. Reda Robar will give the FinCom position on the local schools, and one of the things she'll mention is the infrastructure. We've got to take care of the buildings we have, in spite of the fact we're trying to go out there and get more buildings. Now, as you move into the regional schools, we have the same problems. The space will eventually get to the regional schools. It is in the junior high. Special ed is still a problem. The infrastructure is still a problem. There's one additional problem, and that is being addressed by your elected officials, and that is the regional agreement with Boxborough. I bring to your attention that right now we have a ninety-five-five split for construction. Any one percent change of that, say ninety-four-six, represents approximately a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to Acton. So although it's a political question, it is a financial question, and I promise you, we are going to track that very closely on the finer. But your elected officials are doing, taking the initiative. Next chart. Now, we've answered the three, the three questions about how much it's going to cost to keep the town going, where's the money coming from, and how is it being expended? Now, I'd like to put that in perspective. We have here the five-year capital plan that was worked out with your, what we call Acton Two Thousand and One Committee. In reality, it is a meeting of all the Board of Selectmen, of all the school committee members, and all the FinCom. You have, you see these six items, they've been presented to you before in January, they've been in the Beacon, and I bring that to your attention. There is nothing on that chart that is not deemed necessary for the welfare of Acton. Nobody's there wanting to build a building so that they can get a name on the building. In fact, it'd be awful nice to come up here and stand in front of you and say we didn't have these capital expenses here. Each one of these items has been flushed out. It is, keep in mind, there's nobody sitting on the stage tonight or in this room right now who believes you can predict the future. Our very pragmatic friends say, ah, you can't make a plan, you can't predict the future. I guarantee you, nobody thinks you can predict the future. But you better plan for it, because if you don't plan for it, it's going to bite us like we're being bitten right now. We've got to go down and execute this five-year plan. Now, we have asked, and we've been given by the staff, what will it take to turn these new edifices into operational? In other words, those buildings, there's construction costs up there that you see. We have got the associated operational budget requirements, whether it takes the heat to keep it going, the furniture, et cetera. Now, with that in mind, go. We have tried to help you put in perspective. I know that's our goal, to help you see how it is you're going to vote. We have changed, and we have a benchmark of a three hundred thousand dollar house. I made a mistake a number of times saying this was the average house. I was correcting, and I appreciate that. The average house is down around two forty-six, two forty-seven, but I have difficulty multiplying numbers other than with one or two digits. So I think three hundred makes it easier. And as you see, that's a progressive step. For an O-one to O-two, it goes up approximately six and a half percent. That's one you're going to be bringing on your regional high school. But if you look at that closely, and you look at what you get in Acton, and you look at what is in the Acton five-year plan, you see there, you've only got about a five point four percent increase from year to year. Now, with that in mind, I'd like to close by addressing a subject that was previously addressed with legal women voters. We did, when the warrant went to press, we only were able to come to a conclusion on thirty-one out of forty-five articles. In response to what we thought very valid comments is, like, why doesn't the FinCom have its recommendations in the warrant, or why don't we know it before town meeting? We tried to respond to that. We couldn't meet the deadline, but the Beacon helped us, and as the lady from the legal woman voters said, we put the, if you were interested, you read the Beacon, you know where the FinCom stands. And if you open up your warrant now, every place where the warrant says the recommendation was deferred, we have voted positively. There's only one place we have a conditional positive, and that's in Article thirty-seven, when we will debate the use of free cash probably tomorrow night. Thank you for your time.
I'm Dorey Hunter, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and I'm going to just give you a little overview of the town municipal budget, because it is scattered through the warrant. But first, a few general comments. Get the slide straight, that is. Despite the structural problem that Tom mentioned, and I'll come back to, before I close, I would submit at the moment that we're in good financial shape. We know where we are. We have significant unused debt capacity. We're seeing modest budgetary growth. We have an AA bond rating, strong management team, and as you see, we feel we're serving the community, making a difference, and shaping the future. Now, to specifics, the budget that you will see tonight, the municipal side is composed of a couple components, and for those of you who've been through municipal budget hearings before, you'll understand. For those of you maybe a little new, let me explain. The municipal philosophy of budgeting is to take a new proposal, something different, and put it out for the first year in a separate warrant article. The next year, if that warrant article is approved, we fold it into the, what we call the base or a basic budget. And then, for year-to-year comparisons, so we're doing apples to apples to apples, you'll see on the table, for instance, on page thirteen, I think it is in your warrant, and fifteen in the budget book, there's a little footnote and a star prior years that says includes budgetary articles. We will count, for instance, this year's warrant articles in next year's base, as next year's based, next year when we do base budget comparisons, we'll count them with the budget. So what we have here is the ninety-nine base budget, which is the base budget from last year plus all the monetary warrant articles that were passed in municipal side last year, and comparing that to the base budget this year, we're up one point four percent. We have in addition this year, four major initiatives and groups of warrant articles, Recreation, Environmental Protection, Infrastructure, Memorial Library, which add another four percent, so that the total municipal spending package proposed tonight is five point four percent. And as you know, all of the items set out in those warrant articles are essentially new or changed initiatives which you get to consider individually. And we also strive on not to spend all the money that were appropriated wherever possible and save it, bring back, and at the end of the year, it's the custom of the Board of Selectmen to look and see if we want to do any end-of-the-year savings. Spending typically turn back substantial funds at the end of the year. Now, those groups of initiatives you'll see scattered through the warrant in various articles. The Recreation Initiative, which is a large one of three hundred and eighteen thousand, appears in the Assabett River Rail Trail articles, which will be taken up very shortly under Articles Three and Four. There's a large component of reestablishing the recreation program we once had and ceased to pursue. Elm Street Tennis Court, it's a grand opening of NARA, and the Cultural Council Program. And the second group of articles that you will see on the municipal side, which form additional spending initiatives within that four percent, are those related to environmental protection, about almost nine hundred thousand dollars, a watershed trading program at Nancy Taverner, we'll explain under Article Six. The net tax contribution to Nezwick, which is the same contribution that was last year, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. The remainder of our Nezwick obligation, which is that onerous one that we have, but we have a plan to see it out to the end of the contract, the remainder of that funding comes from the income from the brokering program and what you pay at the gate at the landfill. And then we have a landfill closing proposal under Article Twenty-Six, which Bill Mullen will explain, which is an expenditure in seeking a savings. Under Infrastructure, we have a reuse proposal for Seventeen Woodbury Lane Studies, so we can figure out what we're supposed to do with it, on new additional sidewalks, some town hall improvements, vehicle replacements, and storage building for a hundred thousand dollars. Under the articles that you saw, and in addition, one of the articles you'll hear very soon tonight, is a Memorial Library implementation. It's a new library becoming online in November. There's an article and some funds to discuss with that. Now, even though we say we are in good financial position at the moment, Tom outlined the structural problem we have. We've had it ever since nineteen eighty-one, when Proposition Two and a Half was enacted. And you'll see, this line on the graph is the allowance of budget growth under Proposition Two and a Half. The green line is the actual computed inflation. The red line is the municipal budget and percentage increase. These are all percentage increases year to year. And the black line is the total education spending adjusted for enrollment. And you'll see that our spending is a steeper slope than either inflation or Proposition Two and a Half, and we have dealt with that various ways in each of a number of years, and we continue to try to deal with it. And Tom just outlined some initiatives we hope will pursue and will ease us in that regard. And you'll hear the specific articles as they come up. I hope that gives you a little overview of the total municipal package. Thank you.
I'm John Penderville, and I'm going to give the Finance Committee review of the Acton municipal budget. It was put together by Pete Ashton, Chuck Olmstead, and myself. And to start off, we're going to have probably a little iteration of the numbers. And I trust that the end of this thing, you won't feel like you've had a firehouse dose of numbers, but I think the iteration may prove profitable. First, I'd like to start with a look that a businessman would put at the budget process that's followed by the town. In fiscal year ninety-nine, the budget process actually started in July last year, when the town department heads produced, start to produce their bottom-up budgets, their estimates in late summer and early fall. Then later in the fall, the town manager, John Murray, the assistant town manager, and the department heads met to discuss, debate, and react to the proposals of each department's estimated requirements. And after this budget retreat, each of the department heads submits a base budget to Don Johnson, the town manager, along with a priority list of the department's additional requirements. The manager reviews these budget submissions, assigns his priorities to the submitted needs, including a list of recommended and not recommended new programs. The base budget and the list of new programs was compiled, and they produced two large loose-leaf binders, in different colors each year, transmitted to the Board of Selectmen and to the Finance Committee in December. A day-long budget information, as Tom Mackey mentioned, was conducted by the Board of Selectmen in January. Each of the town department heads, the police chief, the fire chief, at all, present their budget and answer questions of clarification. It's not an inquisition session. Then the Boards of Selectmen and the Finance Committee conduct their own independent reviews and analyses of the budgets. And eventually, the warrant articles, which are in front of us tonight, with actions recommended, not recommended, et cetera. The Finance Committee recommended or not recommended, took no action this year on all the warrant articles. In April nineteen ninety-eight, the Finance Committee under Tom Mackey hosted a public review meeting, and we hope next year more will come. We increased the attendance by a hundred percent. We had two people instead of one. I would encourage you next year, though, come. There's the chance to ask questions and get the detailed answers. The school committees and the Minuteman representative presented their summaries of the budget, and the Finance Committee then did what I'm doing now, and you'll hear more of it during the progress of this town meeting. And the bottom is, we're here tonight before you, the legislature. The finance articles that we're going to be talking about, and Dorey has mentioned some of them, all of them, I think, there are sixteen municipal articles that will require action on funding. Fifteen of them amount to almost one point eight million dollars. And the budget article is for twelve point nine million dollars. This latter amount includes some items that were added by the Board of Selectmen to the base budget that Don Johnson presented to them. All sixteen articles are recommended by both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. The twelve point nine million dollar basic town budget is approximately two point four percent greater than last year's comparable budget. And the increase includes, if it includes all sixteen warrant articles, is about five point five percent greater than the comparable number in nineteen, fiscal year ninety-eight. Now, I'm going to give you a bit of iteration on what Tom just spoke about, and give you a look at what I call the uses first of funds. Most businesses do this. You'll see it in any annual report that you receive from a corporation that wants to have its stockholders know what's going on. In fiscal year ninety-nine, we're going to use over forty point eight million dollars for municipal schools and other important services. And if you go clockwise with me from, from twelve o'clock, the municipal budget amounts to, is in green, and amounts to twelve point nine million dollars, as I indicated, about thirty-one point seven percent. The public schools are in blue, thirteen point four million, thirty-three and a half percent of the, of the uses. The Acton Boxborough Regional Schools, eleven point four million, or about twenty-eight percent of the, of the total budget. Minuteman in blue, three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, one percent of the total uses. The warrant articles that I mentioned earlier, one point one million, or two point seven percent. There's an overlay for five hundred thousand dollars to take care of tax abatements and taxes not paid. Nezwick, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, one point six percent, and a small local school subsidy for the rest of the choice program. The municipal budget in green, the warrant in red, and the Nezwick in orange are recommended by the Finance Committee town reviewers, and they aggregate the fourteen point seven million dollars that I previously mentioned. Now, the funds. The dollars coming into the town aren't segregated the way they come in. They come in and are used for all of the uses, and they have to balance and equal forty point eight million dollars. Otherwise, we're in trouble. And municipal budgets have to balance. The property tax levy, in blue, thirty-three and a half million dollars, eighty-two percent of the total sources of the fund, of the town. No big surprise here. Other sources in green aggregate six point three million, fifteen and a half percent of the total budget. And they include the items Tom spoke about earlier, the green cherry sheet amount of two point eight million, the motor vehicle, excise taxes, two point one million, and municipal fees of one point three million. Free cash, nothing is free, eight hundred and seven thousand dollars, or two percent of the budget. And that's what will balance the sources and funds. And as Tom indicated, the free cash represents a fund balance of the town's revenues and expenses at the end of the fiscal year. It's available for us to use after certification, and it will be discussed further in the, in the meeting at, under Article Thirty-Seven, when you get the Finance Committee's recommendation as to why eight hundred and seven thousand is the amount of money that we think should be used. And finally, the last source is a one-time transfer in red of a hundred and seventy-three thousand. The budget balances on the books. Let me just take a brief look, though, at the, at the large item, the tax levy. It constitutes the lion's share of the sources. Thirty-one, over thirty-one million in blue, ninety-two point six percent of the sources, is the levy base derived from last year's levy limit, to which is added seven hundred and seventy thousand, shown in orange, for the permitted two and a half percent increase, and eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it comes from new growth, new construction that the assessors have permitted and said is available for assessment and therefore for taxation. And to this, thirty-three million point six, we add the red number, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, or two and a half percent, for debt exclusion. or 2.5 percent, for debt exclusions, which we have already authorized at prior town meetings. And that is outside the 2.5 percent limit. This tax levy is currently weighted 85 percent residential, 9 percent commercial, 4 percent industrial, and 2 percent personal property. If we were to tax ourselves to the outside limit, we could actually tax ourselves to an amount of about $43 million. We're not anywhere near that point. There is no untaxed levy left on the table this year, nor was there last year. Finally, you can cut this budget another way. You can look at the municipal budget in terms of where do the funds use for it in terms of salaries. And here you see the $12.9 million of the basic budget that we mentioned earlier. 73 percent of it in blue is for salaries and benefits. The other categories are debt service, which is in gray, $961,000, a little over 7 percent. Supplies in yellow, $751,000. Services in green, 8 percent. Utilities in red, 3 percent. And other items, 3 percent. That's the use of it. You can see that we obviously are a service industry because of the 73 percent of our funds going for salaries and benefits. Now, in closing, while I was putting this together, I took a look at an old town meeting, since we are a service industry. And it's not unexpected our revenues are for salaries. And while reflecting on the $40.8 million budget, I looked at the 1983 report of the Selectmen and other offices of the town. And guess what our receipts were in 1983? The town debt took up $4,400 of that, 20 percent. Highways, $1,400, 6 percent. And believe it or not, we had a poor benefit, $1.1,000, 5 percent. And the town ended up that year with $2,400 in balance in the treasury. And that was real cash. Thank you. We'll move now into Article Three, dealing with a budget transfer. Ms. Berry from the League said that we would show slides of the motions. We're going to do that on complex motions, not on every motion. And there aren't many complex motions this year, so I think you'll see one probably only on Article Five. The motion in Article Three reads, "Mr. Fredericks moves that the town appropriate $30,000 to be expended by the town manager for the purpose of appraising, surveying, and providing other in-kind services as may be required to secure a federal or state grant for the acquisition of land to establish a route for the Assabett River rail trail. And to raise such amount, $30,000 be transferred from free cash." To her second. Mr. Fredericks, to your motion.
Yeah, we would like to do a joint presentation on Article Three and Article Four. I think we discussed that with you before.
Sure, go right ahead.
And Mr. Adelman would like to present Article Four, and then I'll summarize it with Article Three, even though we will vote them in order.
Is this a test to see them staying awake?
Everybody's been clear up to this point, so we thought we'd try to confuse everybody.
Okay, good, good. Well, we're only on Article Three. Mr. Adelman, you are going to present Article Four. Is that correct, or some material under Article Four?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go right ahead. This is a nice, short presentation, isn't it?
Brevity and clarity are the hallmarks of a good town meeting presentation, I understand. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, friends and family. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk with you about Article Four, which is the planning, the acquisition of the Assabett River Rail Trail. We have a few slides. Gary Rhodes is here on the projector. That is a view of the section of the trail in Maynard with the Assabett River in the foreground. I'm going to give a little bit of background, and then show you the existing condition of the proposed rail trail. And then I have four overheads to show you somewhat where we are in the process and what the next steps are. The planning, which has gone into the study and determination, the feasibility of this project, has been great. And I wanted to recognize Martin Gretz and Jim Dixon, Acton residents, who are on the Assabett River Rail Trail, and also people in the town of Acton who have worked quite a bit on this, Catherine Garcia and Mary Michaelman, whom I believe is here tonight. I am not a member of the rail trail, so I may, if there are questions, defer to these gentlemen for answers. I was asked by Mr. Fredericks to present this because I have been involved with transportation, recreation, planning in Acton for about 10 years that I've lived here. And in a prior job, I worked for the National Park Service, where I planned, constructed, and managed a number of rail trails and other recreational trails in various parts of the country. I'm currently working on a rail trail project in Salem, Mass., that connects to a converted railroad in the town of Marblehead. So with that background, I must tell you how excited I am about the possibility of this rail trail. And again, share with you a few images. Gary, this is an overall map of the Marlboro branch of the, what was the, Fitchburg Railroad. The Fitchburg Railroad is what we currently use when we take the commuter train from South Acton into North Station. In 1850, the Marlboro branch was constructed. And the moderator and I discussed this before the meeting and decided we didn't need to take this year by year. So we'll skip ahead to 1979, when the Marlboro branch was abandoned for railway purposes. What's interesting, when I was doing research for this presentation, I discovered that at its peak, the United States had 300,000 miles of railroad. And there are now 150,000 miles of that. Just about half of our nation's railroads are abandoned. There are, however, 10,000 miles of rail trails. And there are 950 trails operating in just about every state of the country. The trail before us, again, is 12.5 miles from the South Acton Rail Station to Marlboro. And the other four towns, Marlboro, Stowe, Hudson, and Maynard, are at similar stages in the planning and construction process. The next slide shows the 1.2 mile of this trail, which is in the town of Acton. So here we've gone from our grand railroad infrastructure of 300,000 miles of railroad in America to the mile we're looking at tonight. It starts at the southern edge of the town, right by Christmas Motors, and proceeds northerly to, of course, the commuter station, stops just short of the new Maple Street reconstruction as part of the replacement of the railroad bridge. The next few slides, if you could take them one at a time. This shows the scene here, if you will. Probably everybody in this room has seen this at least once a day. This is proceeding north in Route 27, right at the Acton Line, Christmas Motors, as to the right. Note, excuse me, note carefully the entering Acton sign on the left. The next slide, that's the same sign. So what you're seeing is a parallel alignment of this railroad. It parallels Route 27 from, again, the town line to, again, Maple Street, right at the new bridge. This shows the general character of the space. And again, this is before a trail has even been developed. This is essentially the way it is. The railroad tracks are still there. Next slide. This shows the one obstruction. It's the former, it's the building which formerly occupied the Beacon. There's actually, in addition to this building, which sits on the railroad, part of that process allows a easement around the building, should it be necessary for a future trail, should we decide to do that tonight. The next slide shows, again, this railroad. These pictures were taken about a week and a half ago. Shows the railroad in a cut, which is important later when we talk about some resident Nava concerns. This obviously helps to screen the trail because railroads tend to go as straight as possible and as level as possible. They make great trails, at least the kind of trail I might use. It's nice and straight and level. But, so the ground is periodically cut so that the trail can be as level as possible. The next slide shows a more level section. And this, unlike some western railroads, which exist on easements alone, this, when the Marlboro branch was built, is a 70-foot piece of real estate. It's not a right-of-way. It's a piece of land. And you can see the stone walls clearly on the left. And if you look really close on the right, around the middle of the slide, you'll see the classic New England stone walls, which define this piece of real estate. Next slide, please. This is the Tressel over Mill Pond. In the distance, you can see the Erickson Feed Store, the white building behind that big spruce tree. Obviously, there would be railings added to this, fairly simple railings. There's been some discussion in the Beacon about, you know, does this building stay, obstruction stay, and does it get modified? It does stay. And it gets, again, railings that are pretty modest railings, like you have in the middle of the auditorium here. The tall cyclone fences that have been objected to, that you see where most bridges cross other roads to prevent people from throwing things onto the roadway below. They're not necessary for safety on people on the trail. And I believe the next is our last slide, which shows the terminus of this, and again, exchange halls in the distance. I think, at this point, I jump to my slides. We can do this smoothly, I'm told. And to summarize, well, it's hard to get the first one in. There's simple reasons, and I believe some people will be speaking from the Planning Board and from the Transportation Advisory Committee and Recreation Commission after my presentation. In essence, the purpose of the trail is obviously to encourage bicycle transportation to the train station. We'll talk about funding in a moment, but that's obviously an important part of it. It improves safety by providing an alternative to Main Street, Route 27, for pedestrian and bicycle traffic. Enhances recreational opportunities. This is something that you may actually want to do, particularly when the trail is connected to the other towns. And the efficiency of public infrastructure is a lot of words, but it, in essence, is the root source of the leveraged federal funds that I explain on the next slide. So again, in this context, Iced Tea is not a drink, but it's the Intermodal Surface Transportation Efficiency Act, which is the source of federal funds which are administered through Mass Highway that provide the reimbursement for the acquisition of this railroad. The town will need to pay at least 10 percent. So there's a local match. The minimum requirement is 10 percent. The estimate for this piece of trail is $30,000, and that's what the warrant calls for. You should know that of those $30,000, which are estimated for survey, appraisal, and title work, the appraisal piece was estimated at $12,000. And I believe we recently received a low bid, in fact, from an Acton firm, of some $4,700. So it's likely that it will be less than 30. It can't be less than 15. So certainly, if you choose to vote for this tonight, vote expecting it's 30. But already, our indications are that it will be somewhat less. Then, of course, people will say, "Well, what will it cost to build a trail?" Because again, I want to be very clear. Article Four is to appropriate the local match to acquire the railroad. There is no trail construction funds provided in this article. The funding cycle, as I'll show on the next slide, is that approximately two years after the acquisition process is complete and after the application process for the construction funds are complete, we would be back to town meeting in April of, everyone have their datebook, April of 2000, to then ask for the construction funds. So this is not something which is immediate. This is not going to happen right away. But there are some critical steps that need to take place now so that we can be ready for the construction funds, should we decide as a town to do that. And the timing. This recaps some things which have taken place, and the box shows where we are now. So the Assabett River Rail Trail group began the study process in 1992. The feasibility study process resulted in a document that looks like this, was complete in 1995. In 1997, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Central Transportation Planning Staff determined that it was in fact feasible. And the feasibility here means, is the railroad intact? Is it physically possible for the, sort of a generic formula in terms of dollars per mile? Is it feasible to build a trail in this location for this approximate amount of money? And it was in fact determined to be feasible. And then, in October of 1997, the Massachusetts Highway Department, acting for the Federal Department of Transportation, approved, their word isn't "approved," it's "programmed for funding" this grant, obviously dependent upon a positive vote tonight. The next steps, as I just alluded to, is that in February of 1999 is the Iced Tea Grant Application for Design and Construction Funds. That would be approved in October of 1999, which then puts us in position for the 2000 annual town meeting to see if we want to do that. And again, that would be to vote at least $30,000, which would be the local town match for an anticipated construction cost of $300,000. Now, in March of 1997, and then again, a couple of weeks ago, there were a couple of meetings held, community meetings, where butters were notified. And there were some concerns, as you can imagine, that this is something new. We haven't done it before. And there are always concerns with something which represents change. Safety, privacy, and property values were two, were three issues that were raised. There are a number of studies which have been done throughout the country now that there are so many trails established. There's a significant database of trails, lengths, construction, use, and the issues which they create. And these three concerns are very, very similar to those concerns which come up across the country. Obviously, some of these are subjective. We have done some research. And there were four studies done over the last 20 years in terms of safety on trails. And again, no one can say, you know, with any guarantee that any place is safe at all times. But statistically, the safety on these trails has been better, or I should say, the crime has been lower than in other parts of the towns where the trails pass through. The, I've personally spoken with a number of law enforcement professionals in towns where these trails exist, and they've said similar things, that the occurrence of crime on the trail parallels crime in the town, and that the safety experience on the trails is favorable when compared to other parts of town. Consistently, to a person, law enforcement people that I've spoken with have volunteered that bicycle safety, pedestrian safety, is significantly safer on these trails, which is separate from roadways and vehicular crossings, as this particular trail is, where it has no intermediate road crossings than riding bicycles on numbered state highways. The Chief of Police from South Burlington, Vermont, was quoted, and I think it's useful here, that "crime and the fear of crime do not flourish in an environment of high energy and healthy interaction among law-abiding citizens." And I think that's something that we need to think about as we consider the discussion in this trail. Privacy. There are some residences which are in close proximity to the trail. And that is not unusual. There are numerous design strategies that can help to screen the trail use from the adjacent property owners. In some cases, the natural topography, as I showed you, that cut through the hillside allows that to happen easily. In other places, we have the entire width. Unlike other trails, which are in a very tight right-of-way, we have the entire width of the 70 feet to move the trail, to move it further from adjacent residential properties, and also to provide additional screening, be it plants, earth berms, or fencing. And again, in the subject of property values, there were three independent surveys done, one in 1987, one in 1992, and one in 1994, that found that property values either remain constant or increase directly adjacent to trails. You can see yourself anecdotally, looking in the Sunday Globe Real Estate Section and properties in Bedford, Lincoln, and Lexington routinely advertised as enjoying proximity to public trails, the Minuteman, National Park, and specifically, the rail trail. In closing, I want to obviously ask for your support tonight to come help us to plan the trail. There are significant... There are significant, significant work that remains to be done, and I also just want to reinforce that the concerns are entirely legitimate, concerns that people have about safety, about property. In no way does the Asaebet River Rail Trail Group, or do I, minimize those concerns. And that's the reason why we're not in a rush to build a trail. We think it would be improvident to not take advantage of the highly leveraged federal funds which are available to acquire this, but that does not yield in the construction of a trail. So I ask supporters, as well as people who have concerns about the trail, to work together over the next two or more years, so that we can come up with a consensus in town about what is appropriate here, how should it be done, and how can it meet the mutual goals for recreation, transportation, and the concerns of people who live adjacent to the trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. What I'd like to do is try to explain the two articles and the difference between the two articles. Ed brushed on Article Three to the point that this is a budget transfer that picks up the matching funds. Article Four is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we would apply for the grant, and we would borrow monies and purchase land under that grant. In order to qualify for the grant refund, we have to spend ten percent matching funds. The ten percent have to be certain qualifying amounts, which would come to fifteen thousand dollars. We estimated it would cost something closer to thirty thousand, of which fifteen would be the qualifying part, but the total package, as best we can estimate, is not more than the thirty thousand dollars. So you can see that the two articles go hand in hand, and I would encourage to keep your vote the same on both articles. The Selectmen recommend both articles.
Your Finance Committee's opinion on Article Three, please.
The Finance Committee recommends acceptance of both articles also.
Okay, we're now going to open it to debate for the town meeting members. Because this article might be somewhat controversial, I'm going to use pro and con microphones for this one, and the three microphones, the one in the back, and the two on my left, your right, will be pro microphones, and this microphone in the back, and these two in front of me will be the con microphones. If you just have questions, go to any microphone, but you also can come down front and ask anybody sitting at the table a question, if you think the question applies just to yourself. In other words, you think that this is not part of a question that you expect will be of general interest to everybody, if it concerns you, come on down front and ask your question, as opposed to asking it in front of the town meeting. All right, we'll now take people, and I will start with the lady at the front microphone, which is a pro microphone.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Renee Robbins, and I chair Acton's new Transportation Advisory Committee. The Board of Selectmen established the Transportation Advisory Committee about a half year ago to advise them about a variety of transportation issues in town, ranging from traffic and parking issues to biking and pedestrian improvements. The committee has five members and two associate members, who collectively have a great deal of expertise on traffic planning and transportation, cycling, and environmental issues. Our committee's priorities are to improve all forms of transportation in Acton, including making our neighborhood safer from vehicles and more pleasant for pedestrian cyclists and residents. The Transportation Advisory Committee strongly endorses the Asaebet River Rail Trail, which would be a wonderful new transportation and recreational asset for the town. The TAC looked at whether the rail trail makes sense from a transportation perspective, and agreed on a number of points that it does. Right now, Acton has few streets that are good for cycling. Some roads, such as Routes Twenty- Route Twenty-seven and One-Eleven, have heavy vehicle traffic and are not currently configured for cycling, especially for young bike riders, even though they lead to the junior high and two of the elementary schools. Therefore, many children in Acton don't have the opportunity to ride their bikes under the circumstances in which many of us grew up riding our bikes every day to school. Our many scenic roads are nice to drive on, but typically too curvy and narrow to be comfortable for cyclists, especially for inexperienced ones. Some accidents statistics are telling. In the U.S., sixteen percent of all people killed in motor vehicle accidents are pedestrians or bicyclists. Thirty-nine percent of all children aged twelve and under who are killed in motor vehicle accidents are killed while walking or riding bikes. In contrast to these roadway conditions that can be dangerous, the rail trail offers cyclists and pedestrians, especially young ones, a much safer alternative to competing with cars and trucks on our streets. The Asaebet River Rail Trail, a multi-town facility, also offers excellent commuter access for people seeking to use the South Acton Railroad Station. The limited spaces at the commuter lot are filled early in the morning, many of them by people driving from Stowe and Maynard and other towns south of us. A Federal Highway Administration study identified the lack of a discreet space for bicycling as a frequently cited reason more people don't commute by bicycle. A few years ago, Acton got federal funding to install secure bicycle parking lockers at the train station. The rail trail commuter connection would be an excellent complement to that effort to increase access to the station. The Transportation Advisory Committee is planning to work on other ways to improve the parking situation at the station, but improving bicycle access via the rail trail is one opportunity that doesn't involve worsening traffic in the already congested part of South Acton. One transportation-related issue that has come up is whether motorized vehicles, such as mopeds or all-terrain vehicles, would use the rail trail, ruining it for cyclists and pedestrians as well as neighbors. The fact is that right now, there is nothing to restrict such use on the existing abandoned rail bed. But since the federal funding that would contribute to the rail trail prohibits motorized use of rail trails, Acton police can enforce a ban once it's converted. Motorized vehicles could be physically restricted, signs posted, and the trail patrolled. None of these are possible now. In sum, the Transportation Advisory Committee recognizes that traffic issues are a big concern for the town, and we are looking to create and improve alternative means of transportation within the community, for our children, and for ourselves. The Asaebet River Rail Trail would be a wonderful asset and a substantial new opportunity for people to get out of their cars and enjoy the pleasures of walking and biking. Now, since I still have the microphone, I would like to take off my Transportation Advisory hat and make one final comment, as in a butter, which I also happen to be. As in a butter, I also strongly support the rail trail. I do not share the pessimistic concerns some of my neighbors have expressed. When my husband and I got our first abutters notification about the rail trail, long before the Transportation Advisory Committee was formed, we were very enthusiastic about the idea and testified before the Board of Selectmen in support of it. It's not a concern visually, for I don't mind watching people walking and biking through the woods. In the summer, when the trees are leafed out, I won't even be able to see them. I am also not concerned about a negative effect on the value of my property. On the contrary, if I were to sell my house, I would specifically advertise that it is adjacent to the rail trail, because I know that, like access to the commuter station, it is considered an amenity. Real estate listings for Lexington, Arlington, and other towns that the Minuteman Bike Path go through are evidence of this. Mostly, I support the rail trail because I would love having a safe place for my children and their friends to ride their bikes after school, and for my family to ride on the weekends, and a place where their bike ride will be more enjoyable than going round and round the nearest cul-de-sac. As in a butter, I will vote enthusiastically in support of this recreational and commuter facility for our town, and I hope you all will too. Thank you.
I should comment, if you have questions, I think Roland Bartle is here, and Roland is prepared to answer them, if you have questions that you don't want to bring before town meeting, but just want to ask the questions. I would prefer it when, as we debate this issue, if people who speak, both pro and con, try to bring new issues up that other people haven't said, that is somewhat helpful if we can do that. And now, we will turn to a lady at the front microphone, who will speak on the con side, I believe.
Can I use an overhead, or would you rather not?
Everybody else can, I don't know why you couldn't. I no longer really care, now that I'm over here.
My name is Nancy Cullenane, I live on Maple Street. This evening, you will hear from South Acton Village residents who oppose the development of the Asaebet River Rail Trail in Acton, and I am one of them. Instead of speaking to you about how this trail will ruin my life, I will try to explain how it could impact yours. I went to the, first, I went to the Conservation Department to see if there is a bike path planned for the North Acton Recreation Area, and I was told a walking path is planned around the entire area connecting to a bike path. Many paths are planned throughout the area. I learned that bike riding is allowed in all Acton Conservation Areas. While researching, I found out there are groups in Acton who find areas of Acton for the town to purchase, to use for recreation, and to keep for natural conservation. This is to protect the town from becoming overdeveloped. The North Acton Recreation Area, the Morrison property in the Boy Scout land, are some recent examples. The abandoned tracks the ARRT wants to acquire are a lush oasis in the overdeveloped, overpaved, heavily congested South Acton Village. The town of Acton doesn't need to take any responsibility for purchasing this land, because there is no way a developer can build a house on it. Any tax money, reimbursed or not, should not be wasted on this, when there are so many more important things Acton needs. It's your tax dollars which will pay for the development, construction, maintenance, police, and emergency coverage of Acton's end of the rail trail. Keep in mind, this trail plans on including four other towns, Maynard, Stowe, Hudson, and Marlborough. Maynard, Stowe, and Hudson have not approved similar articles yet. Acton's commuter lot has two hundred and sixty-eight parking spots. Users of the rail trail will be encouraged to use Acton's commuter lot, because there is limited parking in the access spots in the nearby ARRT towns. This will occur mainly on weekends, because the lot is fairly full of commuters during the week. Acton residents who want to use the trail during the week will have to pay for a sticker or pay the meters to park in the lot. Your tax dollars will also pay for the added maintenance and upkeep of the commuter lot. When I told a friend from Littleton, a group wants to put a rail trail beside my house, instead of giving me the sympathy I expected, he was ecstatic. He explained that a group of families from his neighborhood often drive to the Bedford Trail. Now they can drive to Acton, which is closer, and not have to worry about finding a parking After he said this, it hit me that it won't just be Acton residents driving through Acton to the commuter lot, for once word gets out, it will be people from Concord, Carlisle, Chelmsford, Sudbury, Westford, Littleton, Groton, Harvard, Bucksboro, Stowe, and Maynard, and those are just Acton's nearby towns. Once on the rail, users will share the trail with people from towns surrounding Maynard, Stowe, Hudson, and Marlborough. It is estimated as many as ten thousand people have used the Minuteman Bike Way on warm weekend days. The latest population statistics I could find were as of nineteen ninety-four, the total population of the three Minuteman towns was eighty-five thousand four hundred and ninety-seven. The total population of the five Asaebet River Rail Trail towns was eighty-five thousand seventeen, a difference of only four hundred and eighty people. As for the use of the commuter lot, Central Street, Main Street, and Railroad Street will be greatly impacted by this. School Street, Piper Road, High Street, Prospect Street, Martin Street, Stowe Street, and Liberty Street will also be hit hard. There could be more traffic on Willow Street, Summer Street, Mass Ave, Loesbrook Road, Pope Road, Great Road, depending upon which towns the users will be driving from. The main streets in Acton have enough traffic on the weekends, we don't need any more, especially from other towns. Presently, the commuter lot is a peaceful place on the weekends. If this rail trail is built, the lot may not be as full as during the week, but it'll be much busier because of the coming and going of trail users from dawn to dusk. Trying to be open-minded, I went to the start of the Bedford Trail on Sunday, March twenty-ninth. I went to the Bedford end, because I thought it would be more similar to Acton than Arlington would be. I almost cried, there were people everywhere, there were families, singles and groups, there were eating and drinking, there was trash on the ground, some families were picnicking in the parking lots, one person was lying along the side of the rail trail. Some people were resting in the few-to-be-found grassy spots in the area, there were people wandering in all directions, it reminded me of Hampton Beach. Please don't let this happen to South Acton Village. Just last week, I read the town manager's message in the nineteen ninety-seven Acton Town Report. One of the reasons he gave that attracts new residents to Acton was, quote, "our quiet quality of life," end quote. The South Acton stretch of the planned rail trail is not very long. If Acton does not approve this trail, all the ARRT will miss out on is the use of Acton's commuter lot. In the same case, Acton taxpayers will miss out on much more. They will miss the extra traffic, trash, congestion, pollution, and they will miss out on the added monetary expense out of their pockets. Please keep the peace we have left, and do not approve Article Four. Thank you.
The gentleman at the front microphone.
I'm Ken Houston, I'm at Freedom Farm Road. I would like to encourage everyone to vote in favor of Articles Three and Four. I've been an Acton resident for five years. Previous to that, I lived in Barrington, Rhode Island, where there is an excellent rail trail along the Narragansett Bay for about fourteen miles. Before that trail went in, there were loads of security concerns. At the time, people were concerned about their houses being broken into by people with mopeds, who would be stealing televisions and getting away on mopeds. There were other security concerns, however, the experience of that area was almost universally positive. It was a wonderful recreational facility, still is. People used it for walking, for bicycling, for rollerblading, families and individuals, very few problems, highly positive. I think the cost here is quite minimal in respect to other costs of recreational facilities we've approved. I encourage everyone to pass it.
We'll take one from the con side now, I'll take this gentleman at the front microphone. Sir, excuse me, are you a registered voter?
I am registered, yes.
Okay, excuse me, I thought you might not be.
I am.
Excuse me, then.
My name is Michael McGinnis, I live on Fletcher Court in Acton. My property border runs about twelve hundred feet alongside the proposed Asaebet River Rail Trail project. I'm representing the property rights and concerns of my neighbors in the Mill Pond neighborhood.
Excuse me, sir, just to set the record straight, I think you registered to vote too late to be able to speak at this town meeting.
I was told I can speak at this meeting.
Who told you that?
The clerk.
If you...
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, wait a minute, I make that decision.
I know, I know you do. But I was told that I could speak.
Well, I know, what you were told, I think, was that if you asked permission, you might be able to speak.
May I have permission?
Well, I don't want to be foolish about this.
I'm not being foolish.
I said, "I don't want to be foolish about it." So just be quiet for a moment. I am going to let you speak, if you can speak for just a couple of minutes.
Seven minutes I have, my preparation is.
Seven minutes is too long. You're not a registered voter, you have no...
I am a registered voter, I registered late.
Look, I understand you, you are not registered in time for speaking at this meeting. I'm going to let you speak, but I'm going to ask you to hold your comments down to three or four minutes. If you can do that, you can speak. If you cannot do that, I will not let you speak.
I'll do the best I can, thank you.
All right, fine, go ahead.
Rails-to-trail advocates have a history of not informing the butters of their desire to develop railroad right-of-ways. This tendency to dismiss abutters' concerns and possible claim to property rights is initiated from the highest levels of their national organization. The Rail-to-Trails Conservancy in Washington has consistently resisted efforts from property of butter associations to make their intentions of building bike paths known. These officials have refused to print information on proposed takeovers of abandoned right-of-ways in local newspapers or public service ads. What I'd like to address tonight is not property value, per se, which we can show full precipitously when bisected by a rail trail bike path. What I will focus on instead is on how our rights as abutters are being ignored and violated. Most users of railroad right-of-ways do not own the underlying land that the right-of-way is on, they only have an easement for a specific purpose. When this specific use is extinguished, when the railroad is abandoned, the land can revert back to the then-existing abutting or adjacent property owners, free of encumbrance or easement. This is a well-established constitutional and statutory precedent in all the states of the Union. In the last twelve years, citizens... In the last 12 years, citizens and property owner rights groups have been lobbying Congress and state legislatures not to pass laws that abrogate private property rights as they pertain to revisionary properties. The United States Supreme Court ruled that the National Trails Act of 1993 is constitutional and that private property may be taken. However, things are changing. The first victory for property owners versus rail-to-trails advocates happened in December 1986 in Washington State. There, the state Supreme Court declared unconstitutional a state law that attempted to take property of butters' reversionary rights away. In January 1996, a victory for property owners in Michigan. The United States Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit ruled that an abandoned right-of-way could not be put in as a converted rail trail because it would be impossible to put the right-of-way back if needed for a railroad in the future. One of the stipulations that rail-to-trail groups must meet in acquiring abandoned railroad right-of-ways is to preserve the rail corridor so that said railroad corridor may be revitalized in the future. Like the right-of-way in Michigan, our local rail trail corridor has been interrupted by partial right-of-ways being sold off to private concerns. Two of these private properties, one of them was shown by the first speaker, and the other one is at the Acton and Maynard Town Line. In March 1996, property owners in Indiana win back their rights to property when the U.S. Court of Appeals decided that rails-to-trail groups did not have rights to a formerly granted railroad abandonment. Finally, a butters are getting their land back. In March 1996, the government decided not to appeal to the United States Supreme Court, to the United States Supreme Court, a U.S. District Court decision that if a law property owner wants suing a rail-to-trail conversion for compensation from his land loss, this is the first such decision in the country for monetary awards and may open the floodgates for property owners to be fairly compensated for property losses. In June 1997, the Indiana Supreme Court ruled that property owners can institute class action suits against railroads to collect fraud damages when these railroads sold abandoned right-of-ways to trails or other purposes. This means that every butter from Acton to Marlborough can sue for return for their land and compensation for damages in a class action suit. Finally, the biggest victory for the date so far was last year in December. A 40-mile stretch of abandoned right-of-ways sued the Surface Transportation Board and the United States Court of Appeal in Washington. This is the government agency that awards certificate of abandoned rights to rail-to-trail groups. The justices unanimously favored for the butters. The abandoned railroad right-of-way and ownership reverted to abutting property owners. I am not opposed to a well-planned and fairly acquired railroad right-of-way to trails plan. Part of my training as a body-centered therapist is in exercise physiology. And for 25 years, I was a competitive runner and cyclist. I've logged many miles running on paved bike trails. And I'm sure many of you have heard of Jim Ryan, the Kansas Flash in 1964 became the first high school runner ever to break the four-minute mile barrier. Jim also represented the United States in the Olympics in Mexico City. He's a great inspiration and a role model for me. And the recent Kansas court decision has spurred Ryan, now a congressman from Kansas, to introduce into Congress the Railway Abandonment Clarification Act of 1997. I'm reading from the congressional record now. The founding fathers wrote that the fifth amendment to the Constitution is to protect private property rights. While best known for its protection against self-incrimination, the fifth amendment also contains what we will call the Taking Clause, which says, "No person shall be deprived of property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without compensation, regardless of what public good is accomplished." In the first 10 years after the enactment of the National Trails Act, the government took property from 62,000 landowners, and thousands of more have lost property in just the last few years. Not one of these aggrieved landowners or homeowners has received any compensation for their loss. It is evident that our constitutional right to own property is eroding, and this must stop. Ryan says, "As a runner, I have covered many miles on trails, more than I'd care to count, and I appreciate good surfaces to run on, but my own desire to run on a trail should not come at the expense of a property owner whose constitutional rights rest in the balance." The Assabette River Rail Trail Committee claims this proposal does not have to be approved at the town meeting until September. Give the abutting property owners and other concerned citizens 90 days to complete their research into their rights before approving this $150,000 of town funds for this project. Money as we now see it is a direct affront to private property ownership. Money that, if properly challenged, holds up, may not, may be lost. The warrant states that our town selectmen have supported this rail-to-trail initiative. We would like to find an elective official who's going to represent property owners' rights in this debate. Vote no tonight on Article Four and support property owners' rights. Thank you for the time.
Before we go any further, let me just explain to you briefly what the problem was at the beginning so that we're all straight on it. Often, people who are not registered voters and are not even residents of the town can speak at town meeting, and normally you vote as to whether you want to hear from them or not. Invariably, there are outside consultants or experts hired by a town board to add technical expertise to the debate. And that's why we ask you to vote, because they don't have an automatic right to speak. And normally, you vote to allow them to do so. In the case of a citizen, they have to be a registered voter to speak, but they have to be registered by a certain period of time. I think that is a rule that we really should follow, but I think we should not be stupid about it and that we should allow people who are taxpayers, who are residents, to speak to Articles. And that's why I did allow this gentleman to speak. And he was true to his word, although he was very hurried, and he did get his point across. I'll take the lady at the front microphone, who is on the pro side.
My name is Barbara Epstein. I live at 13 Old Lynton Road. I'm going to be a little bit short-winded compared to the last speaker. I just want to speak to a couple of things, and they mostly come from my experience in Arlington. I lived a block from the rail trail. I moved here four years ago. And when we sold our house four years ago, we had listed the property according to its proximity to the rail trail, and we sold it ourselves, not through a rail tour. And just about everyone that came to us was interested in the rail trail and being close to the rail trail. We use the rail trail considerably there with our family, and I think that the type of people who use a rail trail are the type of people that we would like to have, even if they come from abutting towns, to use our, both, some of our town facilities and our town businesses. I know that there were a number of businesses that benefited greatly. There were many businesses that opened up along the rail trail and others that changed their business accordingly to accommodate bikers. There were many restaurants that put signs up on the rail trail, and I know that they benefited greatly from having the rail trail nearby. I disagree with the last speaker, although I haven't followed all of this that intimately, but I believe that there's been all sorts of news in the paper over a year or two or more about this Assabette River Rail Trail and that they had as much opportunity as anyone else to form their opposition. And, you know, I don't think it should come as any surprise to anyone that this has been going on. It certainly doesn't come as any surprise to me, and I don't live nearby. And that's all I have. Thank you. Please vote for the rail trail.
On the con side, the gentleman at the back.
My name is Terry Maitland. I live on Martin Street in South Acton. We are in a butter to the rail trail, and we're not in favor of it. We've lived there for 15 years, back when South Acton Village was a little bit sleepy, back when perhaps a lot of people will remember that the South Acton train station used to be serviced by Budliners that would regularly break down. And it wasn't as heavily used, certainly, as it is today. We've, through the improvements of the South Acton commuter station and the service, all of which is a great public benefit, we've really seen, you know, a tremendous increase in traffic to the extent that people for quite a while now have been parking on the local streets outside of the commuter lot itself. And now that they've paved along Jones Field, a lot of people know Jones Field, people are parking there as well. So there's a tremendous spillover during the day from this parking. And you also know that that road along Stowe Street, where people are rushing to get to the commuter parking lot, you know, the traffic there in the morning is such now that the school buses will not stop at that corner because it's considered a safety issue. This is the kind of growth in that area that we've experienced and that we've witnessed. And it's a little disconcerting to realize that that's going to continue even into the weekends now. Certainly not people racing for the 736 in the morning, but certainly there'll be a lot more traffic. It seems to me that of all of this rail trail, Acton's share of it is just over a mile or less than 10%. And clearly, the linchpin for this entire process in the Acton side is gaining access to that commuter rail. And I just, I foresee a disaster in the making. I think that rather than reverting to a little bit of peace and quiet on the weekends, that that situation will be reversed and with really, I think, unfortunate consequences, not just for the residents who live there, and as I say, we're a direct to butter, but I don't think it's all that positive for the town either. Certainly, one could consider it to be something of a common good to have a rail trail of that sort. And yet, in Mr. Adelman's very able presentation, I just did not see any benefits go up on that slide that really would benefit the town per se. And so we are opposed to it.
Mr. Maitland, was your house featured in this old house? It was, wasn't it? I think it was. Has nothing, no bearing on the article at all? I just wondered if it was the one.
If that adds to the influence of my argument, then fine.
No, I just enjoyed watching it, that's all. Gentleman at the back, on the pro side.
I'm Alan Warner from 5 Lodge Road. And speaking as a private citizen, I'd like to say that my family and I have enjoyed many hours of enjoyable biking on the Cape Cod Rail Trail, the Northampton Rail Trail, and the Bedford-Darlington Rail Trails. I think that it would be a real asset to the town to have a trail like that. Speaking as the chairman of the Recreation Commission, certainly, the rail trail will fit very nicely into the overall recreation plans and thinking that we have relative to recreation for the town of Acton. I would like to ask one question of Mr. Adelman, though, if I might. The speaker with the, previous speaker with the overheads mentioned the taking of land. My impression was that the land that the tracks are on are owned by the railroad, and it's not an easement over property owners' land.
Mr. Adelman, if you'd like to answer, go ahead.
That is also our understanding. I should point out, as I mentioned in my presentation, that this is a piece of real estate as opposed to an easement. And some of my work in the Midwest, when I was in Ohio, dealt with exactly those issues in terms of the reversionary clauses on the underlying fee that was taken in the mid-19th century for railroad purposes. Our understanding is there are no such reversionary clauses in this parcel. But again, fundamentally, what we're asking for tonight is to leverage the federal funds so that we can do the survey, title, and appraisal work so that we know precisely what the terms and conditions of the title to this property is. That's exactly what we're asking for.
Thank you.
I'll recognize the gentleman at the back for a con argument.
My name is Rob Hoden. I live next to Terry. And if you were paying very close attention to the third issue of this old house, that was the guy in the red T-shirt up on the roof.
That does make a big difference tonight. That's very good.
Obviously, there's a lot of emotion about this issue from both sides. And I'd like to say that I come to it from a position of a lot of ignorance. While I know and have enjoyed some rail trails, I've never been on them in the Massachusetts area. However, it seems to me, after reading the concerns in the newspaper, as well as having been through the emotional realization lately that none of my friends that live close to me, that are butters to this land, have ever received any notification or any instruction to meet or to talk about what this proposal is all about. I'd like to say that I'm, as a resident, somewhat concerned. I'm also concerned because there seems to me some very good arguments on the pro side, but also some pretty thoughtful arguments on the con side. I have a four-year-old daughter, and we have a garden that is down near where the trail is going to be. And I ask you to just think, if you had a four-year-old daughter and you read in a yellow sheeted paper that Ford Police Departments and Harvard University have said, "Do not let children play near the rail trail because of dangers", I don't know, but I'm concerned. When you hear, when I know that I have friends from Cambridge who come to visit my daughter during the weekend or during the week to play at Jones Field, I know that they cannot find parking spaces, even in the wonderful new parking lot that they built next to Jones Field because it's taken up with the commuters already. Not to say what will happen. Now, I understand the gentleman said that it will help us bring commuters to the rail, to the train station via bicycle. What happens with people going the other way, who want to drive the other way and who want to park in Acton to use that? I think that, as Terry said, and I won't belabor the point because I know you asked us not to get into other points that need to be discussed, I'm concerned about the parking and what has happened in the six years since I've lived in Martin Street. Thank you.
On the pro side, the lady at the front.
My husband, I live at 16 Half Moon Hill. I grew up in Newton, and I lived actually a few doors from Eddie Adelman, abutting, Cold Spring Park, where they improved it at one point, adding exercise trails. And I think there was some concern it would add to a lot of use and there would be, it wasn't a paved trail. But the, I have to say that the quality of life improvement from those better-used trails was major and continues to this day. I speak to a lot of people on another point, from Stowe and Maynard, who park, or I have spoken to people who park in the station, and I feel like we might be able to decrease the number of cars commuting from there. My husband uses the bike parking spots, and I'd like to see them used much more. And also uses the Minuteman Trail to commute to Cambridge. And a long commute is made more positive by the existence of these trails. I just think for quality of life, it would be something that I would be proud of, to have more exercise and beauty areas in Acton.
Mr. Katie.
Paul Katie, 56 Strawberry Hill Road. I think we've heard from both sides. I'd like to move to previous question.
All in favor of cutting off the bait, see, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay.
Nay.
The bait is cut off. We'll now vote on the motion as originally read under Article Three. We are voting on Article Three only, not on Article Four yet. All in favor of the motion as read under Article Three, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no.
No.
Motion carries. Article Four. Mr. Fredericks moves... Excuse me, let me just go back and look at something here. Okay. Article Four, Mr. Fredericks moves that the town appropriate $150,000 to be expended by the town manager for the purpose of acquiring certain parcels of land as set forth in the article, for establishing a route for the Assabette River Rail Trail, and that to raise such amount, the town manager is authorized to apply for, accept, expend, and borrow in anticipation of any federal and state grants available for these purposes. Do I hear a second? And moved and seconded, Mr. Fredericks.
I'd like to remind everybody that this now is the vote for the reimbursement of the federal grant. And the selectmen recommend this article.
Finance committee? Mr. Homestead?
The finance committee recommends approval of this article also.
I think it's been generally debated, but we're now, Article Four is up for debate. Seeing nobody standing, we will vote. This requires a two-thirds vote, is that right, Counselor? This requires a two-thirds vote, is that right, Counselor? I think it is, two-thirds vote? Yes. Are we prepared to show the slides?
Yes, sir.
If it was anyone, Chuck, other than you, I wouldn't do it. Okay?
How's that? Again, going as my presentation did, from south to north, there are two groups of properties. Well, there's three. The first is the railroad itself, which is shown in the dark tone, and that would be acquired in fee, it's approximately 5.88 acres. The area that's shown in the dot-dot-dot, I'm looking at this in a backwards fashion. Here we go. This is, we're only in Acton. This is for the next town meeting. The solid, the key is the same, though. The solid portion here, again, is the railroad, which will be acquired in fee. The dot-dash pattern from the town line, basically, this goes around the Beacon Building and is proposed for an easement, the acquisition of an easement. Those were two groups of property. The third, I know, upside down. Oh, that was right. Upside down to me. The third group of properties are also, again, the trail is predominant, the piece of real estate that we're talking about, which is, again, currently in public ownership held by the MBTA. There are a series of properties here, of course, to get from the end of the trail, which is, was reconfigured by the reconstruction of the railroad bridge and the relocation of Maple Street. There are three properties over which easements would be negotiated, and again, this will come from the ultimate trail design, should we be privileged to go to that stage in the process. But the goal is to come as directly as possible and as safely as possible from the current railroad station, and there are a couple of different ways of doing it. So the question is, there are three undeveloped properties from this point where that dot-dash pattern appears, continuing along between Maple, it's not Maple, Maple, it is Maple. Maple, on the opposite side of the railroad track, there are three separate properties undeveloped over which an easement would be acquired to connect the trail, and there's a possibility of acquiring an easement on other undeveloped land, which I believe is shown as 62, thank you, on this particular map. So those are the, those are the two groups of properties. There's a cluster of easements in the vicinity of the Beacon Building, and there's a cluster of easements at the northern terminus by Maple Street.
I have a question regarding access.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am. Would you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Susan Sisk, I live at 76 Main Street. My question is, from the diagram you show, the people who arrive at the train station will be required to leave their cars at the train station. Could you tell me how they are to negotiate the live tracks, the bridge, and the other obstacles, the unpurchased land, in order to access the beginning of the trail, as I understand it?
There are a couple of different ways of doing it. The one that's most straightforward is you could park at the train station and go up railroad, go across the new bridge, and then using the sidewalk on Maple Street, access the northern terminus of the trail. That's the simplest, that's existing. There are a series of other possibilities, working with the T. We could have a grade crossing similar to what exists at the West Concord and Concord commuter rail station, where within the limits of the train station itself, the T has not objected to, can't see you, there you are, to providing an on-grade crossing, as they have in other stations in the Fitchburg Line. And then, that's when, what I just showed you, the easements on the opposite side of the railroad going up Maple Street would come into play there. It's undefined, and obviously, we would, we would work, we would need to work this out.
Do you have a follow-up question, ma'am?
Yes, I do. It seems to me that no matter how you slice it, you're asking rollerbladers, cyclists, families, families with strollers to cross the live tracks. Am I correct?
No, either, well, one scenario would have them make a crossing within the limits of the station. The other scenario-
The limit of the station meaning?
Meaning the space defined by the T where the train stopped.
Does that not mean crossing the tracks?
Yes, I'm answering your question.
Do you think that is a safe recreational activity for families?
Let's not have two people talking at once. You ask a question, let them answer it, and then I'll let you ask another question.
There are two alternatives. One is to cross within the limits of the station on grade. The other possibility is to use the new bridge over the railroad.
That would entail crossing on the sidewalk on the new bridge, am I correct?
You would cross the sidewalk of the new bridge, yes.
Thank you.
Gentleman at the back, on the con side.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Tom Cadaya, and I've been a voter here for 43 years. I think I qualify. What I would like to know, could I possibly make a motion to defer this whole situation for further study? And reason, one reason why I mention that, I'd like to find out what Maynard, Stowe, and Hudson's going to do. Why should we go now? Let them bring up their meeting and what they want to do. Is it possible to put a motion to defer this article for future study?
It's possible. Let me tell you what your options are. We're now dealing with Article IV. You can vote to lay this article on the table, which disposes of it. That requires a two-thirds vote to pass. It is, however, not debatable. You can vote to, you can make a motion to postpone this matter indefinitely, which requires a majority to pass, but is debatable. You could, let me just check, I think you can do one of the thing. You can commit or refer this to a committee, if you know which committee to commit or refer it to. That is debatable, and that takes a majority vote. I would suggest you either lay it on the table or postpone it indefinitely, if you wish to do either of those.
I'll take the second one, it sounds good.
Postpone it indefinitely?
Rule it out, because there's not enough communications between the abutters and this whole committee, that they should get together and do something, but they're going to do anything, and not this year.
Then if you will, if you will say, gee, I hate to, I hate to put words into somebody's mouth, but if you would say, "I move to postpone discussion of this article indefinitely," if that's what you wish to do.
Thank you.
Go ahead, say that, or something like it.
I move.
I got it. No, no, go ahead. To postpone it indefinitely?
Sure.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Do we hear a second? This is a debatable motion. It's been moved and seconded. I think this gentleman's been standing the longest, and I will recognize you. Now, what we're doing is we're only speaking on the motion to postpone this article indefinitely. In other words, that effectively doesn't treat the motion in this town meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Bob Sisk. I also live at 76 Main Street. This is a pro or a con? I had the privilege of going to one of the hearings, and one of the gentlemen earlier wanted some information on the rail trail, and when I was at one of the hearings, I noticed there were 10 or 12 slides that gave me more of a projection of what was really happening on the rail trail. If the committee could give the rest of us at Town Hall those other pictures that I did have the privilege of seeing, and the rest of the town has not had that privilege of seeing yet, that they might be able to come to a better conclusion on this vote, or should we put it away, or should we vote on it tonight? Thank you.
This is, I'm not going to use pro and con microphones for this particular discussion on whether we ought to postpone it or not, so I'll recognize the gentleman at the front.
David Black, 237 Central Street. I'd like to move the previous question on the gentleman's motion.
Okay, you want to cut off debate on this motion?
That's correct. Cut off debate on the motion only.
It's, I heard a second. All in favor of cutting off debate on the motion to postpone indefinitely, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no.
No.
Debate is cut off. We will now vote on the gentleman's motion to postpone the discussion under Article IV indefinitely. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no.
No.
Motion is lost. We are now back debating under Article IV. I'll recognize the gentleman at the back on the pro side.
My name's Dan Klein, Old Stone Brook. I've been in Acton 20 years, and so far, my only experience with rail trails has been one, not being on one and being terrified on 2A and 27. The other is my 70-year-old uncle riding in on the rail trail to Bedford to come visit me, and he was quite excited and pleased with that. But what I'd like to say is, in my 20 years here, I'm really deeply saddened. I'm deeply saddened because we have an opportunity here to enhance things at a relatively reasonable cost. And we don't, a lot of people don't want to do this. I'm deeply saddened because the community into which I moved 20 years ago was one that was a town community, where it wasn't my house, my neighborhood, your house, your neighborhood. When something was good, we all looked at it, and in most cases, we voted for it. I've heard tonight, you know, not in my backyard, not in my neighborhood, and I've heard, believe it or not, in Acton, a conspiracy theory. I, I really don't know what else to say, but when something that is so community-oriented is this, to see the town members of Acton in such a fearful tone, wishing to put up fences and let the other towns do it first, it just really saddens me.
I'll recognize the lady at the front microphone on the con side.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is still Susan Sisk, and I still live at 76 Main Street. I'd like to ask you tonight to share with some of the experiences of the Metro West rail trails, according to some of the research that we've been able to do just in the few short days that we've had. How many people will be using the proposed rail trail? Our closest and most specifically comparable rail trail is the Minuteman rail trail in Lexington. Estimates of the numbers of people utilizing the Minuteman rail trail per year reached 2 million visitors in 1996. A recent report on Channel 5's Chronicle found that most people thought it was too crowded to use. The Weston rail trail task force research and survey studies, in which Weston turned down the rail trail, by the way, felt that they could anticipate a minimum of 650,000 users per year, with 5,000 users per day at peak periods during the spring, summer, and fall weekends. The rail trail agrees with those estimates based on comparable experiences. The Weston survey also shows that only 10 percent of local townspeople use rail trails. The balance of the rail trail users will be traveling throughout the town of Acton.